My name is Al Amatopole. I used to be a longtime resident of Waterbury and worked at the University of Connecticut Waterbury campus for thirty years. I'm here about the resolution to call for a ceasefire in Gaza. And I'm going to use the editorial of the Waterbury paper to comment from, which was published February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. It's, the editorial says, "There is nothing useful to say about the conflict in the Gaza Strip by this body." It's five thousand six hundred miles southwest of the Brass City, Waterbury, Connecticut. The distance from the Brass City is irrelevant to common humanity. It transcends the distance. And so I find that as a weak argument by the editorial board of the Waterbury paper. Yes, Hamas attacked Israel on October seventh, and that was an improper and inappropriate action by them, and no one, I think, would deny it. But since the killing by Hamas of one thousand two hundred Palestinians, the Israeli army has killed thirty thousand men, women, and children in Gaza. You see it frequently on the television or every night when our so-called free press attempts to address it. The paper also calls Martin Luther King, the great leader of the civil rights movement, as supporting the state of Israel. That was in nineteen hundred and sixty-eight. Today, I believe, and I cannot speak for Martin Luther King Jr., that he would be appalled at what the Israeli Defense Force, meaning really the Israeli army, has done to the civilians in Gaza, both in the north of Gaza and in the south of Gaza. Thirty thousand men, women, children, and unborn have been killed by the Israeli army. The euphemism is the Israeli Defense Force. They have invaded the Gaza Strip and done horrendous damage to the innocent Palestinian people living in that strip. And to quote, as I've already mentioned, Martin Luther King Jr. as supporting the state of Israel in nineteen sixty-eight, I believe truly, if he could witness today what the Israeli Defense Force is doing now in the Gaza Strip, he would in no way defend that action. Thank you. Next speaker, three forty-nine Wall Street, Francisco Ramos.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Francisco Ramos. I live at three forty-nine Wall Street, Waterbury, Connecticut. Thank you all for having me here today. As we, it now started daylight savings time. Hope you all had a good night's sleep this past weekend, despite the last hour. So with that being said, we all know why we're here this evening, on a couple of different issues going on. So for example, going back for, for spreading taxes, now taking care of the public as they should be. And as you guys, regardless of what politician you stand, whether you're the, whether you're the mayor, alderman, secretary, whatever, you should possibly be representing the people. So as a politician, I believe, you should put the people first. So for example, so they're not, so taking care of some of these abandoned buildings, they're decreasing the homeless population, stopping all these deflections as inflation keeps going up constantly. That's just on the city and state level. Now going back to the world wide issue, the main reason why we're here tonight, we need to, you know, free Palestine, and I demand a permanent ceasefire. Because nevertheless, how would you guys feel for your families to be affected? Whether it's cousins, nephew, grandchildren, to your own children, whoever, et cetera? You know, it's totally uncalled for. Yes, as one of the other speakers stated, Hamas itself might have started it. So I understand, you know, you gotta defend yourself, right? But nevertheless, there should be a limit to how much you should be allowed to do. Because twelve hundred compared to thirty thousand, you know, it's kind of, you know, over, excuse me, overkill to the point where it's like, okay, we get it. How much more damage can we possibly take? As to why you're gonna keep going and going? You know, enough is enough already. Because not to mention, me now as a taxpayer, I've got a substitute for Waterbury. It's just, I feel like some of my tax money is going to this noncessuous war that's just gonna keep happening over and over. And if we keep feeding to the buyer, how is it gonna put an end to any of this madness? Which is also another cost of inflation, as it all connects over and over as time keeps going. So that's my main reason for coming out tonight. We need to put a permanent ceasefire to stop what innocent children, innocent civilians, being demolished out of nowhere. And then coming back to the city life, we need to be properly spreading out tax dollars, you know, renovating some of these abandoned buildings to decrease the homeless population so we can have less people becoming drug addicts, which is also another domino effect to affecting the population. Even got another issue, going back to gun safety, like all of these kids are getting their hands on guns and affecting other children throughout the cities and states. So it's that how it's supposed to be a role model and set an example for other people if you're not even addressing some of the main issues that keep constantly happening over and over? You may not see it every day, every month, but it's out there, and people aren't even getting their hands on, the wrong people getting their hands on the guns, and they're still shooting other innocent people. As I even watch, whether it's Fox News, CNN, WTNH, Irenice News, you name it. The world is out there, and we really need to make sure we start addressing some of these issues that people keep talking about on a constant basis that is never being addressed. So that's my main concern also, on top of the ceasefire. So we really need to start actually taking care of the people, and you wanna be voting in to represent us that actually start doing our jobs properly, addressing all these main factors that are not being addressed all the time. Because the more we keep saying every day, it seems like this is becoming the norm over and over. And then even as despite car accidents, how people also keep getting run over and killed, like the thirty-four-year-old about two, two weeks ago on my block, as people are in the body. Thank you, sir. As people always love money, streetlights, and all that. But I mean, that's also another issue. But the main, main two things is the safety in our schools for our children, and the ceasefire in Palestine. Because if that doesn't stop, who knows what things are gonna keep going as we progress this year going to twenty twenty-five? God bless Al. God thank you for your talk.
Next speaker from eighty-two Bracket Room, Waterbury. First name is S U V A D D. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, council members. My name is Sai Natalie. I am from Glazier. I would like to begin by saying an alhamdulillah to those celebrating. With that being said, I should be setting up ifdah, which is Islamic breaking prayer feast with my family. Instead of speaking for the other half of my family who don't have a voice, the ones who are starving, the ones who are picking up flowers from the floor and picking through animal feed to even have an ifdah. It makes no sense that the situation in Gaza is too complex for a ceasefire. Because ceasefire is very simple. It means stop firing. It's so simple that it's designed to be heard and understood in the middle of a battle. There's no middle ground when it comes to it. You either follow the order or you don't. Currently, we have a toll, a death toll of thirty thousand people, not including bodies that have yet to be recovered from under the rubble. There have been almost seventy thousand people who have been injured, some left with life-changing disabilities. According to the Amnesty International, the deaths rate in Gaza right now is one death every four minutes. It's not just Israeli bombs are coming to Palestinian people, it's malnourishment and poor sanitation. We know there are people starving. They are eating animal feed and grass to feed their hunger. In January, over half of all of the aid deliveries were denied access. It could not give the aid to the people that needed it the most. Less than half the hospital staff in Gaza are quickly running out of basic supplies unless Israel lets aid come through. Since two thousand and eight, Israel has refused entry to any UN agency individuals. After all the attempts to hide and shield themselves from any accountability, we know that war crimes are being committed. Refugee camps are being targeted in strikes against churches and schools sheltering hundreds of Palestinians being bombed to the ground. Earlier this week, Israel ordered an evacuation of the hospital to turn around and then snipe the people attempting to leave. There are about twenty-five hundred people still trapped in hospitals. Israel's own Prime Minister of Defense, and I hope, a complete siege on Gaza. No electricity, no food, no water, no gas. As occupying power, Israel has an obligation under the international law to ensure basic needs of Gaza's civilian population. Israel is not doing that. Now, the ICJ specifically directed Israel to take immediate and effective measures that enable the provision of humanitarian assistance and basic services. They are not doing that. They also refuse to reinstate the water supply that they turned off months ago. Stopping medicine and food, Israel's disproportionate and indiscriminate bombing of civilians combined with everything else that we know is the definition of collective punishment, which is illegal under international law. The ending of violence of Gaza rests in the hands of the country's supply of money and the weapons to Israel. The ICJ had found that there is a plausible risk that Israel is committing genocide. It is upon US to say no more. And again, I want to say, one death every four minutes. By the time I'm done with my comment, there'll be one more innocent Palestinian death. The least we can do is call for a ceasefire because morally and directly complicit with every single family destroyed and every life lost in Gaza, we need an immediate and unconditional ceasefire. Because anything less for its future generations will never forgive or forget us. On a personal note, my family and I had had devastating news that one of my immediate relatives' family, four generations, has been bombed, their house has been bombed in class. Forty-five known casualties and twenty missing under the rubble. That happened in here, but in the middle of Glazier on February twenty-second, my father learned about it on the news that night. Right now, since the war has started, there have been over eighty-five fatalities within the Yabbi family in Glazier. So I ask you, Waterbury, to act like human beings and call for a permanent ceasefire. Thank you.
Next speaker from eighty-two Bracket Room, Nada Chupchak.
I didn't prepare anything. I'm just gonna go apply common sense. Where's the humanity, I ask?
Just, excuse me, I'm sorry. Just gotta give us your name and your address, that's all. For the record.
I know. She already took the address home.
Okay. So. The address, just for the record, we need the address.
Eighty-two Bracket Room.
Eighty-two Bracket Room, okay. Thank you.
Sorry, it's really great. But anyway, where's the humanity, I ask? I ask all of you, where's the humanity? Where does it make sense? Okay, we all condemned what happened on October seventh. But do we condemn everything that was happening before? Do we ever care about it? Nobody. Okay. So, like my daughter said before, over eighty-five people of my husband's family have been brutally murdered. So they have targeted a whole generation, four generations of Yabbi's that died in one, one targeted event. So I'm just asking for all our money instead of spending on targeting Palestinians and children seventeen. We'll say thirty thousand, half of them are children that have died. No food, no water. It's the first day of Ramadan, and just one day of not eating food, not having water and food, it's, it's a lot, you know? So can you imagine three months of children trying to have a safe place, more places to, um, just survive, you know? We take, we take for granted just us. When we lose power for a day or an hour, we go nuts, you know? So can we imagine all the kids over there with no food, no water, just trying to survive when they should be playing, getting an education, doing something with their life? This world has it deserves a ceasefire. I'm, I'm sorry, I just didn't prepare anything. I just would say, instead of using our money for bombing people, let's use it for Waterbury and health and education, teaching kids, streets, everything, you know, doing something with it. All I gotta say is ceasefire now. Thank you.
Next speaker from one oh nine Bridgeway Avenue, Tyren.
Good evening. To begin, I want to say I fully stand with the people of Palestine as most of us here do today. I'm here as a concerned Waterbury citizen.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. You just gotta state your name and address for the record. Okay?
Tyren, one oh nine Bridgeway Avenue. And we are urging our board of aldermen to pass a ceasefire resolution, urging all to stand for something. The narrative is already that our city and our board have nothing to do with international conflicts, especially in Palestine. Nobody wants to touch the subject. We are here as a community telling you that we have say on this matter. There are Palestinian Muslim members of our community that are affected by this, whether it's physically impacted, as you just heard, whether it's emotionally or physically. Whether it's to be liked or not, as the very multicultural city of Waterbury have community members that are here that are affected by everything, that anything in this world doesn't affect and concern us as a multicultural city. And that is why we can take a stand on this as an international occurrence. As citizens of this state, we deserve a say in the complicity of the American government, who has already chosen a side that is the side of Israel. The American government provides four billion dollars in aid to Israel for their weapons and their army, and specifically help manufacturing and support with bases here in Connecticut, provide arms directly to Israel to continue the genocide of Palestinian people. That is why it matters to us as a state and as a community that is affected by this, it matters to us as a city. We are here telling you as a community that we do not want to be part of this. We will not remain complicit, and we urge those of you with power to speak up as well, to stand for something. It's being said that this doesn't matter for us and yet relate to the party. Bridgeport, Handan, Windsor, Hartford, and Haven have already deliberated on this exact matter as others of towns and cities that might not have had any coverage. But that is about a ceasefire in Palestine, and it's time for us to catch up. I've attended those other city council meetings and coming here now to my own city for this meeting to speak, as shown how purposely exclusive and difficult it is in terms of seeking help and having our city stand for something. This meeting is being held during Ramadan, the first day of Ramadan, where people are supposed to be breaking fast. They're here instead giving public comment. But after following local news and the huge uproar on the charter and big board that was attempted to be done behind closed doors a couple of weeks ago, and the way the community showed out for that, as they are now showing up for this, the community is not to be ignored anymore. As Democrats and Republicans, if you believe in democracy in our city, then you will hear us and finally stand for something. Something that the community wants, as each of you represents us, not the other people. Again, we are here to make a statement in support of the innocent people of Palestine and to call for a ceasefire resolution to be passed so that our city can be on the right side of history when the hammer falls. Thank you.
Next speaker from twenty-three, Wadsworth Street, Michael Maito.
How you doing? My name is Michael Maito. I live on twenty-second Bracket Room, Wadsworth Street. And I'm here before you, I'm here to talk to you, or sorry, I'm here before you to talk in support of a ceasefire resolution. We, ceasefire resolution, sorry. We all in this room, I'd assume, have jobs. We put in net breaking hours to rich corporations that don't even care about this. But at least we're getting paid. Never what we deserve, but at least we're getting paid. Or nonetheless, we're getting paid. We work these hours, putting the necessary work to them, get a weekly, one-by-week paycheck. And in that check, money is withheld for tax purposes. Taxes we hope, we hope can be used to better our way of life. You know, fix the roads, provide us with free healthcare, strengthen our education system, and building to get our children. Keep, uh, keep us safe and keep us safe in a way that we, that doesn't entail, or that doesn't only entail pouring money to a police force that endangers the life of Black and POC people, and also providing a survival plan, transportation, and et cetera. But no, the tax dollars we labor so hard for are given to, are given to Israel. Our money is being sent over to Israel to fund the social services there. While we suffer with hardships here that could easily be solved if our politicians cared to keep our tax dollars here and fund us, part of what our hard-earned tax dollars are sent over for is for the settlement of Israeli settlers, for the resettlement of Israeli settlers from European countries and here in America. Here in America. The other part is, the other part that they're being funded, our tax dollars are funding, is the advanced weaponry we send over there, we sent Israel to kill innocent Palestinian lives. That'd be, um, kill innocent Palestinian men, women, and children. These Israeli settlers are given heavy subsidies to move into settlements that were once Palestinian homes, homes that are taken by force. And we're paying for this. We go to work and pay for this. We give annually about like four billion dollars to Israel, which is like roughly over a thousand dollars a citizen. And that's coming from our paychecks and our Israeli lives. You know, hardworking, breaking citizens. America has, so America has the ability to afford the social services we so rightly deserve. But it's spineless politicians like Jahanah Hayes who we elect to help us, but instead want to play defense and still keep, and still keep voting to send money to Israel, but have the capacity to wish the Muslim people of her district a blessed homeland. I just think that's shameless. Shame on her. So I'd like to conclude by saying James Baldwin, an American writer, civil rights activist, and revolutionary, once stated, he has terrified, he has, oh, he has, he was terrified at his time of the moral apathy, the death of the parvals, which was happening in the country in his time. He based his moral apathy on the conduct of people and not what, and not by what they said. And that same moral apathy he saw then is the same moral apathy I see around the country and around the world, really. So yeah, that's it. So thanks for your time, for your time tonight for the resistance scene and ceasefire now.
Next speaker from eleven Stupid Street, Lawrence B. DeBello.
Good evening, Lawrence DeBello, eleven Stupid Street. I'm gonna have to change the venue a little bit here, back to Sacred Heart. I read something earlier that I want to read again to you. Should you pass this ill-advised proposal for the city to purchase thirteen Moby Street, you do so knowing full well that it's going to be a financial burden on those taxpayers. The mayor already said that. It's depleting our ARPA funds needed for infrastructure repairs, such as streets of sidewalks. That's a fact. And it's putting our homeowners and residents in the residential neighborhood at risk from an over-concentration of halfway residences. And the property is only being purchased by the city to frustrate our zoning laws. And that only allows halfway residences in an industrial IG zone. Now, I heard a number of people get up here tonight and talk about the homeless and talk about the good works that will happen in this facility. That's not the issue. It never has been the issue. The issue is that the city of Waterbury has zoning laws, and they're meant to protect every single one of you, as well as me and my family and your families. How many of you have been before the zoning board or the zoning board of appeals? Or had a family member voted for the zoning board of the zoning board of appeals? If somebody wanted to take a two-car garage and change it into a four-car garage so that they could work on three or four cars that didn't belong to them? Or they wanted to add a second story on your house that only allowed for a single residential? Or they wanted to add an apartment that they were going to rent to somebody because they needed additional income? Where did you go running? You went running to the zoning board and you went running to the zoning board of appeals because you were looking for their protection? I helped a number of people in Tom Clot who were just in that situation. What you're saying tonight is you don't matter. You don't matter up east, and we will destroy your neighborhood by having the city buy the property and go ahead and violate the zone, knowing that we're violating the zoning, knowing that we're putting a facility where one is not allowed. Nobody is telling Renaissance, nobody is telling the church or anybody else that you can't put a rehab facility or a homeless shelter or anything else in a proper zone, industrial general. We have plenty of industrial properties in this city that are vacant. You wanna put a halfway facility for women and men, then you put them in the proper zone, which is what was determined in two thousand and thirteen needed to be done to protect the citizens of this city. If you vote for this tonight, you are voting for every citizen in this city of Waterbury to be abused. And next time you or your family member or your neighbor, your neighbor comes to you and says, "This is what this person is trying to do", why don't you remind them how you voted them? And tell them, you know what? It didn't matter for the people on this main street. It doesn't matter to you either. I wouldn't help one man, and I'm not gonna help you. I want you to see, I want to see you say that as an alter person and see whether or not they want to put you back in these seats. Because that's the issue here. It's not whether or not halfway houses should be in the city. It's where they should be located and whether or not you're gonna destroy somebody else's neighborhood to fund the archdiocese, to find the spot for the Renaissance that does not belong to that zone. That's what is issue tonight. And for you to vote this tonight and say zoning does not matter in the city, then don't just say it to them. Say it to every single one of your neighbors who you've let out tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker from forty-three Colonial Avenue, Alyssa Hughes.
Alyssa Hughes, one forty-three Colonial Avenue. First and foremost, I want to say, if I'm having a word with the Islam community here right now, I'm here for a ceasefire also. I want to first address why does a ceasefire correlate to Waterbury? It correlates very much to Waterbury for this. Waterbury is very familiar with violence in brown and black communities and communities of underprivileged or any other aspect that acknowledges us as minister. First and foremost, I want to say to the council members, thank you for being council members and thank you for your positions. And also, I want you to recognize and realize who you are. Because I see that predominantly it's here. Predominantly have brown and brown people, and it's something to be proud of, being a Black woman in Waterbury and experiencing all different kinds of things because of my identity. When we talk about violence in Waterbury, I think it's important for us to address the history of violence in Waterbury and how it correlates globally to the world. In two thousand and sixteen, we had an officer that was found guilty of sex trafficking. How does sex trafficking correlate to Waterbury? A nineteen-year-old girl in two thousand and twenty was raped and kidnapped at the Apple, Big Apple Motel, which is still open. People demanded justice, word, but we never got it. Some even standing outside the police station also acknowledging the fact that Waterbury had a connection to sex trafficking. Why do I bring this topic up and why? Why do I bring this topic up and why, why are they relevant again to a ceasefire where people are being bombed, killed? We have a position, this moment in history, and I'd first like to ask the gentlemen to the sidelines of the Burgessy Church, please be quiet. Because as I waited for my turn to speak and listened to the testimonies of people, I heard rebuttals of evilness, I will describe this. Because what is humanity? Humanity is love, humanity is trust. Humanity is taking a stance. And Bridgeport, and also in other cities mentioned, they have been calling for a ceasefire, and some have even already solidified it. I think it's important for us to realize our positions in history, our positions to the youth. I look at the youth and I think of the people that have influenced me as a youth. Sharm Mosley, a member of your council member, I was in contact. So I see these, these young Palestinian and, and not just Palestinian, but Muslim people here today and the youth, and we need to take a stance, we need to let them know, hey, we got your back. And it's all so simple, just by calling for a ceasefire, that's one step to making Waterbury great. Thank you.
Next speaker from eighty-one Birchwood Street, Vina McDeermon.
Good evening, respected alders. I am here tonight as a concerned resident of Waterbury, in one Birchwood Street, Vina McDeermon. A concerned resident of the state of Connecticut and the United States. I am here tonight because I have been witnessing live on social media the most documented genocide in history. I am here tonight because our elected officials are ignoring the demands of their constituents. I am here tonight asking the city of Waterbury and Board of Alders to support a ceasefire resolution. I've learned the Board of Alders feels that a ceasefire doesn't apply to the city. I feel quite the opposite, that it absolutely doesn't apply to all of us. For several weeks now, each and every day, I have been calling our elected officials, representatives, and senators in Congress, asking that they demand an immediate and permanent ceasefire to end the siege of Gaza, allow for humanitarian aid to get to the people of Palestine, and to vote no on any resolutions providing money from our hard-earned tax dollars to fund Israel's military. They have not listened to us. Those who voted them in for their positions, so now we have to come to you, our local elected officials of the city of Waterbury, and ask that you do the right thing and stand on the right side of justice and humanity. Support a ceasefire resolution. Please listen to the people. I, as well as thousands of other citizens, have been the voice of the people of Palestine who have no voice. No one is listening to them, and it is well past time for you to listen to us. We know the statistics, we've heard them over and over again. Thirty thousand plus innocent Palestinians killed, innocent men, women, and children, thousands and thousands seriously injured, many children are now orphans. Orphaned children lose their family identity in Gaza. Orphaned children in Gaza have an acronym, WCNSF, Wounded Child No Surviving Aid. Can you imagine the trauma that these children are experiencing every single day? We know that people are literally starving to death due to Israel's lacking of humanitarian aid through humanitarian orders, which is a war crime. The situation is dire and it's happening right in front of all our eyes. And the state of Connecticut invests millions of dollars of public employee pension money into Israeli companies, funds from pensions from our municipal employees, teachers, and state workers, ninety-five million dollars. Our government is sending billions of dollars, our tax dollars, to fund Israel's military. Wouldn't the city of Waterbury put good use to some of those tax dollars that are sent to Israel? This money could be invested in our schools, our infrastructure, our social services, healthcare, and our housing. Money that we need here in this country, in the city, is being used to support a genocide, and our government is complicit. Americans, particularly those here in Connecticut, as a state home to many weapons manufacturers that are supplying weapons, should be very concerned that there are no conditions on Israel. They continue to destroy Palestine and its people with no accountability whatsoever. We cannot let this continue, and we need to call for an immediate ceasefire within our local communities. We have families right here in Waterbury that are from Palestine, families that have lost so much. We should all be demanding ceasefire. And as someone who works for children, my heart breaks for the children of Gaza that are still alive, suffering so much trauma. Some have died from heart attacks due to the stress and trauma they've experienced at five years age, five years age. These children will suffer enduring trauma for the rest of their lives, and that trauma has become vicarious trauma for all of us here. Many of us are witnessing the horror of what is happening in Gaza every day, live through social media, and we are suffering ourselves as we continue to watch what's happening, and our government is complicit.
One minute.
As a Muslim, it's my obligation to speak out against any injustice and oppression. We're shouting for the roots, ask for our government to stop being complicit, stop funding atrocities, stop gaining in real. Tonight, we're raising our voices here to ask the city of Waterbury to do the right thing and support a ceasefire resolution. Please be on the right side of history, ceasefire now, greet outside. Thank you.
Next speaker from seventeen Bronson Avenue, Omar Almoh.
Hi, my name's Almoh, and I live at seventeen Bronson Avenue, Waterbury. Hello, and alhamdulillah to all those celebrating. My name is Almoh, and instead of having a big feast to break my fast with my family, I'm here today as Waterbury City Hall, breaking my fast with a date, so I can ask Waterbury to call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. I would like to start off with a statistic from Amnesty International. Every four minutes, an innocent Palestinian is killed. As someone who has had eighty-five members of their family brutally murdered, not only by Israel, but by the bombs and warplanes funded by the US tax dollars, forty-five members martyred in one bombing. My peers and I are wondering when this will end. How many lives will have to be taken for America and you, Waterbury, to call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire? In the last one hundred and fifty-six days, at least thirty thousand Palestinians have been killed and seventy-two point seven others injured in the Israeli airstrikes on Gaza. While millions have been displaced by uncle and Israeli being a part of the millions thrown from their homeland, this is not a war, this is collective punishment and a clear attempt at extermination. Israel has ended generations dating back to biblical times and destroyed most of the churches and mosques in Gaza. Yesterday was the first tawwi prayer of Ramadan, and the Muslims of Gaza preyed on the rubble of what used to be Al Farouma Mosque. We cannot keep saying that the call for ceasefire is too complex when the reason to ceasefire is right in front of our eyes. When babies are dying from starvation, that calls for a ceasefire. When children are getting to a limb center, that calls for a ceasefire. And when dead mothers are getting ripped from the grips of their children, begging for them to come back, that calls for a ceasefire. This is not a war, this is a genocide. Aid trucks are being blocked from entering, and when aid, when an aid truck was brought to the desperate people of Gaza after denying the Muslim people aid for over a month, the I O S sprayed Palestinians with bullets, killing one hundred and twelve and injuring seven hundred and twenty Palestinian men, women, and children. These people were trying to get flour, I'll say that again, these people were just trying to get flour. Not to mention Palestinians are being pushed farther and farther south, seeking refuge and not finding it. I would like to say again, the statistics that I said in the beginning of my speech. Every four minutes, an innocent Palestinian is killed. Silence is compliance, so I'm pleading with this council to call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Thank you.